All right, I'd like to call the order to the city council special meeting for Tuesday, July 9th at 5 o'clock. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead, Council Vice President Chad Grassil.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark D'Amers.
That determines a quorum. Number one, consider approving the temporary liquor license application for the VFW Post 3817 for the Bikes and Bytes event on Thursday, July 18th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the restaurant rural parking lot. Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any discussion? Well, I guess there is. Roll call, please.
Riappell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Grassil?
Yes.
Mark D'Amers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes. Sorry.
That's okay.
Motion has passed. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Moved by Riappell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on. We'll now call the city council a work session for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead, Council Vice President Chad Grassil.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark D'Amers.
That does determine a quorum. We'll go to number one. Proposed project for Good Samaritan. Mayor Gander, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Very good. Ms. Wicker came and spoke with me in my office here a week or two ago about a proposed project that will need some fundraising for our local Good Samaritan. And I asked if she would be willing to come with her daughter and representative from the Good Sam to speak with us about this project. This is a perfect time, I think, to look back just a little bit on our relationship between the city and the Good Sam. I know you came to this community. I used to serve on your advisory board like 25 years ago. And my wife also did resource development for you all, just for full disclosure, back in the day. And I got to hear way back then about how important it is to have that community relationship between the Good Samaritan and the City of East Grand Forks. And very oftentimes even that partnership is what starts the whole process going to why the Good Samaritan will locate in a given community. And then that ongoing support because frankly, in the environment that you all have to operate, whether it's the regulatory environment from the government or whether it's the economic environment of tight funding, community participation is always going to be a big deal in the Good Samaritan, whether it's the senior apartments, independent living, assisted living, and even that big open space in your campus that could maybe someday have a nursing home on it again. And so, you know, looking around, we know like in Warren, they couldn't quite get the nursing home to go in one certain way, so it came back to the city of Warren to run. So Warren operates the nursing home in that city. In other areas, you know, the Herald article as recently as earlier this month, earlier in July, talking about Twin Valley and the Twin Valley Living Center that had to close because of just a variety of factors and how devastating that was to that community as to the jobs lost and the displacement of residents and the kids that want to come and visit their parents there or grandparents and now they have to travel a greater distance. Maybe these dear souls don't get quite as many visitors. So all of these things point to how very important it is to have that great connection between a community, in this case, the City of East Grand Forks, and the Good Samaritan, which includes these apartments, which includes the assisted living right there, but also for full disclosure, my mother lives in Pines. And this will be a project that will be for Maples. Now Mom isn't that mobile, so she's not sitting outside Maples. This really, Mom goes outside over at Pines some and enjoys it a bunch. She's been so well-treated, she's thriving there, couldn't see, could only say good things about it. Now, while I don't anticipate that the city is going to be able to chunk out a tremendous amount of dollar support for this, I will tell you that personally, my wife and I look forward to supporting this financially. I will also say that in this room, you have a lot of really good people that can help to brainstorm a project like this. You know, what are the steps that will be involved in the actual structure of it or the fundraising of it? And also, we get good coverage of these meetings. And I want to make sure that this thing gets all the coverage it could possibly get for what a neat thing that it will add to the residents there at Maples. And also, Ms. Wicker, the last time we got to visit with you, it was a bit of a tense moment in talking about snow removal. And I just thought the guys, the folks would like to see the kinder, gentler side of Ms. Wicker. She has taken the lead in this and to do, you know, for the fundraising and the planning. And of course, I wanted to make sure, Michonne, that you're here from Good Sam and making sure that this dovetails into some of your long-range resource development plans and improving the grounds over there at Good Sam and for quality of life for our people. These are our East Grand Forks residents living in your facility. It's a funny thing, we still want to care for them and yet we can't put up a structure because it isn't our property. But we maybe can help to facilitate it in some way. And so, I'd love to hear from you all if you want to share details of the plan and even to how it fits in with the Good Sam overall plan for the grounds and resource development and all the rest. Take it away, you guys.
I would like to introduce Mrs. Michonne. She is one of the executive directors over at Good Sam. And this is my daughter. She is the driver. This is Terry Horfordall. I'm pretty not much mobile anymore, so I have to be driven. But this was my brainstorm. In August of this last year, my husband passed away.
I'm sorry.
I have had two knees, two times replaced. So both knees have been replaced twice. My right hip has been replaced twice. And if I fall, I can't get up. I mean, I'm down there and they've got to come pick me up. So my husband said to me, "Well, you know, maybe we should look at going there at least for the winter." He said, "It could be our winter vacation home." Well, as it ended up, he never made it there because he passed away the day before he was supposed to come there. But anyway, it's a beautiful place. The apartment that I have, the two-bedroom, two-bath apartment, it has got everything there that I could possibly need. Washer, dryer, stove, refrigerator, freezer, everything that I could possibly need. The only thing missing from there was there was no outside space. So we go down for lunch, and when you get done with lunch, there's nothing to do but to go back upstairs to your apartment and watch TV. Now, they have about five chairs that sit out in front on the sidewalk, right in front of the door going in. And it's like the early bird that catches the worm. The early, with the earlier, somebody can get out there and park in those chairs, that's it. There's no more room. You can't go outside, so you go back upstairs and you watch TV. So I said, "Well," I got finished with the Veterans Memorial Park that I fixed up that cemetery over there by doing fundraising, so I thought, "This is another good one." So I started brainstorming and of course, we had to clear everything with Good Sam. We found a spot and my daughter got ahold of Chip Shea and he had friends that is an architect and engineer. He contacted some of the other friends. We got a spot picked out, got it all measured up. You have them in the plans that we packed out there. How big the area is going to be in one part of the area, 14 by 18 foot. There is a cupboard over the top of, what do you call it? What do you call that?
Pergola.
Pergola. That's over the top of the, so they can get out of the sun if they want, or they can sit in the sun because the area is big enough, way big enough. We have to have, it's kind of tough to explain because we have to have poured concrete. We can't have patio blocks. Patio blocks, I had a contractor that said, "I'll give you all you need." But we can't use patio blocks because about, probably about 90% of the people over there are using either wheelchairs or walkers to get around. And patio blocks aren't very even. You can get stuck in those things very easy. So it's got to be a very smooth, you know, finish. And we've got restrictions. We have to, everything that, all the work that is done cannot be done volunteer labor. We can volunteer supplies, but no volunteer labor. It has to be done by a licensed contractor, I suppose, for the liability or whatever because there are so many. But I would say that a good percentage of the people that are there are from East Grand Forks. They've been longtime residents. And I think, you know, I was lucky to get in over there instead of having to maybe go someplace, Anita or Northwood or someplace else. I mean, there's just, you know, not that many places you can go. So this is something that's viable and I said, "I will do everything that I can." Of course, I have to depend on Terry for driving me, but I will do everything that I can to contact businesses, to contact whomever, whatever, individuals, any little bit, you know, that comes in will help. And I've got the prices. We're trying to work some of those down. They were kind of put together in a hurry because we wanted to present the project to the residents over there. And some of the things, you know, we can get the prices down a little bit, but we've got the initial, you know, estimate to what it's going to cost. And it isn't going to be cheap. It is expensive because we have to, first, we have to pour the footings for the pergola, the top cupboard. The footings have to go in before the cement can be poured for the patio portion. I broke it down into, actually to three phases. And the first phase is what we're going to work on now, what we're working on now, which covers the footings for the overhead shade thing, the patio itself, the pouring of the cement, the electricity. We have to have electricity run over there because a lot of the people that come out there have got oxygen that has to be plugged in. So we have to have electricity out there. So, you know, I'm looking for a contractor, electrical contractor, that can maybe give us some help with that part of it. But those prices that are there are just kind of sort of a beginning step. And like I said, we're trying to work those down and trying to get as much volunteer, get as much donated as we possibly can. And when I spoke with Steve, he gave, you know, he gave us the ideas and I'm contacting some of those vendors to see if they can help out. And like I said, I would appreciate anything you can do. And now I'm going to turn it over to Michonne and she's going to tell you a little bit more about it.
Well, I thank you for allowing us time on your agenda today. Obviously, the Good Samaritan is, as Steve indicated, has been in the community. Actually, the doors opened at the Good Samaritan in September of 1965. We celebrated 53 years in the community of East Grand Forks. Of course, over those 53 years, there's been significant changes. Most, obviously, you're aware of in 1997, after the flood, the skilled center had to be torn down. There was also, prior to the flood, though, we had 129 skilled beds in the nursing home and 20 units, a 20-unit apartment complex for seniors. Shortly thereafter the flood, and obviously, many of you and your family members were involved in safely evacuating the residents and staff and caring for them, we began building the senior housing community. So Heritage Oaks was first, it's 28 units. Heritage Pines was second, 24 units. And Heritage Maples came third, and that's 42 units. So we have 94 units of senior housing and assisted living on the Good Samaritan Heritage Grove campus, which we're very proud of. We are so happy to be able to serve seniors in this community with our mission of sharing God's love in word and deed. And we're hope, I'm happy to hear that you've experienced that with your mother's care there. That's very important to us. I know that many of you are familiar with our campus, first responders. God bless you all. I can't thank you enough for the support that we're giving almost on a daily basis for the seniors that reside in our campus. We couldn't do it without you. We've become frequent flyers, I would say, as well as I reach out to the fire department and various other entities to help us during various challenges that we have. One I'd like to lift up is January of this year, we had a water main break to our Heritage Pines building and we were without domestic water and water to our sprinkler system for approximately six weeks. And honestly, the way that the city pulled together with us, as well as other vendors, I had never seen such camaraderie and I felt proud to be a part of the community at Good Samaritan. But even greater than that, everyone else within the city. I was impressed and walked away from that situation realizing that we probably need to integrate even more and be more present to know that the Good Samaritan can offer many things, from our space to lots of things. We are considered an unofficial dog park, just so you know, on the south end of our campus, but we hope to build, as you mentioned earlier, at some point. We are a not-for-profit organization, so we rely heavily on local support and donors. And we have been blessed with generous donors. We have not asked for a lot in recent years, but this is something that many of our residents have been asking for. And due to some infrastructure issues with our three buildings and some of the high costs that we have had, there's just no way that we can fund it either, although I would love to. I also will personally give for this project to help us reach that goal. So really, we're here today just asking for your support in this endeavor. And I would entertain any questions that you do have. I know Joanne briefly mentioned that we're breaking it out into a few phases. Phase one is really just to begin the project. Phase two would actually have the shelter added. And phase three, I'm not sure what all is in store there, but...
So phase three is the landscaping part of it, to kind of beautify around it, to put some planters in. And I know that one of the things they talked about with Shea's, you know, is to be able to put planters in so that the seniors could actually, if they were in a wheelchair or if they needed to sit down on a walker, they would be able to work like in a garden space that was leveled and, you know, because a lot of them lose their gardening skills because they have to bend over. I know for a fact because I called Chip and I said, "What is this landscaping? What's it including?" Because it came back high. And he said, "That is a really high dollar amount that we will definitely work down." And he said, "My mom and I are planning on, you know, donating some services." But he said, "I wanted to be high so that you had enough to do whatever the residents there wanted at the end." So those numbers are high. We did meet with Bob Peabody from Lumber Mart and he was kind of giving us some ideas on some ways to trim that, the numbers on that too. So definitely, like Mom said, that those were beginning numbers.
If you look at that front page of that thing that I handed out there, it kind of shows you, this is the front entrance to Maples there. And there is room for, right in front of the doors here on the sidewalk, there's room for about five chairs. That's it. I mean, otherwise, you're sitting out in the driveway where the cars pick up and drop off people. The ambulance comes in, almost ran over a lady in a wheelchair, the ambulance did, because she wanted to be out there and there was no place else to sit but in the driveway. So anyway, this is a place that we have picked out, that it is designed for. And it will work in, like, we'll get, the first phase is the footings for the overhead and the electricity. And it's listed as phase one on the list that I gave you there. That's going to be quite expensive and I can't actually get started, guys, till I get that amount of money pledged or in hand because I can't afford to pay for it myself and I can't tell the contractors or the, to go ahead and do it and then find out I haven't got the money to do it. So that's why we broke it down into three phases. And any help that any of you can give to us, you know, any ideas, any help that you can give to us to get going on this, once we get it going and people see it's actually going to happen, because it's something that Maples has wanted over there for a long time, a place to go outside.
Something that you pointed out in our visit is that the way it started out, Oaks has a covered seating area, Pines has a covered seating area, Maples has the big cover, but because it includes the drive-through, that took up what could have been some of the seating area. So don't worry, they're not coming back for Oaks and Pines in out-years. Those are already there. It's just Maples that needs this feature that it does not have yet.
We learned pretty quickly that the residents don't want to see the back of the building or the backyard. They want to be where activity is. They like to see the comings and goings and that's why the location was picked. We have a small area off the Maples dining room, but when I say small, it's very small and it basically looks, the two buildings look at each other. So it's not where they want to gather. They want to see what's happening, but they don't want to be the greeting committee when the first responders or ambulance arrive at the location.
Anybody have any questions for them or comments?
Dale.
Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you. The other two units that have this facility already, how is this price here compared to what was put up there or how was that, those done?
You know, that was when the buildings were originally built.
Well, they included that right in?
Mm-hmm. So I don't have that.
Okay. So I'm looking at this and I'm hoping that you really work hard on getting some of this down because some of this stuff looks pretty expensive to me for what you're doing. I mean, I'm looking at six footings at $1,300 a piece. You could put a two-story house on that, I think. You know what I mean? So...
Actually, I have a question for them on that too. And I don't know how it goes if a footing has to go in every six feet or every eight feet or how.
Sure.
Because the picture that I got of that pergola, there's only four cones on there. But I don't know, maybe it varies as to a type of gear that was.
Right.
Because there's only four shown on that picture, but there's one for six.
And the architect that Shea worked with was the one that actually gave him the price and all. We haven't seen the dimensions or how they have to be, but that came from the architect, that number. So, and again, they were rough numbers because they were, it was rushed. We met like on a Friday and I think they presented at the following Wednesday. So those numbers were put together fast, but that was put together by an architectural firm.
Sure. And then the next question I'd have would be for the city on the building permit at $300, is that a standard fee for a building permit or is that just something that, or is that kind of inflated too that they put in there to, just to make sure they had it covered?
It varies with cost of the project, right?
It's cost of the project.
The cost of the project.
Yeah.
It depends on how much the project is going to cost as to how much the building permit is. About $300. I think.
The first thousand is $42 and then it goes up $7 every thousand.
So obviously, once they get going, get everything done, that will drop down too then, or not? Or is that, doesn't matter if they get a better deal, once they get started, if they find volunteers or whatever?
Yeah, we don't give money back. So they would just need to come in to us with the project cost.
Yep. Maybe you get the quotes coming lower and then you get your building permit at, right at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't obtain the building permit until you're ready to actually build, so...
Okay.
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 Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
Thank you. Hopefully, our people in the media got a little bit for you and the people listening today. Thank you for your information, Joanne. Thanks, folks.
Well, all I wanted to just end it is, and actually, Steve kind of said this when we met or we kind of talked about it. I know she wanted to stay in East Grand Forks because my sister lives in Wapton and I'm in Arizona in the winter and we tried to move her and she wants to stay here. So I feel like we kind of owe it to our senior citizens. Like, I know none of us want to get old, but it's going to happen to us. And wouldn't we like to be, still be able to be outside and enjoy? Our summers are really short. We don't want to be inside during the summer, so that's it.
I don't want to be down in Arizona where it's...
I've known Joanne for a long time and I know she's a go-getter because I'm pretty sure it'll get done.
This'll be a done deal. I sense it.
Well, and I would love to take care of all of you.
Ooh, that was smart.
Not today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. Moving to number two, request for boiler replacement for Public Works, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So our current boilers in our building were installed in 1994 and they're at their life expectancy now. We had some improvements done to our heating system a few years back. We estimated that we had about five years left. That was in 2016. But because of corrosion and some buildup of material in the internal combustion chambers, it's looking that, like, we're going to have to replace them very soon. We're hoping to get them in here yet this year before it gets cool. Jeremy King worked with Sourcewell and Johnson Controls through, Sourcewell was formerly the NJPA, to get a price for two new boilers and to bring our boiler room up to code. The cost of that is $178,690. The new boilers would operate at about 95% efficiency. Our current boilers are, work at about 80% efficiency. So there'd be a 15% cost savings there. And on top of that, we would see from Xcel Energy a rebate of $8,500 if we installed the new boilers. Some gentlemen from Johnson Controls are here tonight to answer any other more technical questions you might have. If council approves the project, we would pay for it through our building maintenance fund, which has sufficient funds. Any questions?
Thank you. When I read through the proposal you're bringing in through the roof, is there already an access through the roof or do we have to redo all that?
Yep, there's an access through the roof. Yep.
Mr. Helms?
These boilers are all working right now?
Yep.
But they're just at what they say is the life expectancy? So, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, there's, maybe you want to answer that, Travis?
Okay, so a few years ago, we noticed when we took over the system, that there was major corrosion and there was no inhibitors added or glycol to the heating system. So at that point, we tried to flush out the system because pipes were getting plugged up. We did a flushing of the system, which cleaned up the system and added glycol. After that, we noticed that there was still sediment coming in the system and that's coming from the bottom of the boilers. And we had the state boiler inspector look at them and she recommended replacement of these boilers due to the corrosion on the bottom of the heating systems.
I guess where I was going with it is that if there's any way, you know, that this could be split up, instead of doing it all in one year, do one now, one next year or something, instead of having them come back to us every time at, you know, 20-year down road what it might be and then we have to spend this big bill, we could kind of split a little bit and spread it out, I guess is what I was kind of, I'm not denying the fact that it probably needs to be done.
Uh-huh.
I was just thinking if we could maybe do one this year and one next year or...
Is there some...
There's actually three that they're looking at for this year, isn't it? So if we could kind of, so we're not do well with the, with the other, with the library one they're looking at too, so...
There's some mobilization cost to set a crane and bring them through the roof?
No, we're bringing them up through the shop area.
Okay.
Yeah. The venting would go out through the roof.
Okay.
But there is going to be, it is one system, so to put a non-efficient boiler that's right there right now and to put a high-efficient boiler in, to make that system tie together would not work very well. It's, on this project, I do believe that you're going to have to do the whole boiler room at once to make it work properly.
So let me understand, so you're saying that both of these boilers are in the same room right now?
They are. Yeah, so we're kind of replacing quite a bit of, like, the expansion tanks that are tied together and there's quite a bit of components that works.
I was under the impression we were talking two different buildings. That's why I was, okay.
The Public Works is one boiler room.
Okay, it's all in that building.
It has two boilers.
Gotcha. Okay, that's different.
You actually made the point that I was going to make.
Okay. Carla?
I just wanted to make the point that the Building Maintenance Fund, which is a 425 fund, we get two hundred and fifty thousand from Water and Light every year. And just because other projects have fallen, we actually have enough in that account to cover all three projects, so that they won't be in the hole when the year ends, and we'll get a new two fifty come January. So, there is sufficient dollars to do this, and my suggestion was to bring this to you before the heating season started in case it didn't work. And then we'd have to, all the costs of having to find another system to run it and replace it in the middle of the winter. So, we have looked at the dollars, and there is sufficient dollars to cover all three boilers and to get in the best we can with the best efficiency. So, I just want to make that point for all three of them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Demers. Did we look at other quotes or proposals or solicit other proposal?
No. The reason being is that we, I guess, went through NJPA like we do on other contracts, so.
Mr. Stordahl, I had quite a bit of discussion on this as well, whether we should get quotes or not. And since this is through the NJPA, this is considered to be pre-bid. So, this is the state bid price for these type of boilers. So, we're legal as far as getting three quotes or competitive bids, those type of things. This is considered to have been pre-bid.
So, the labor is included in that bid process? Or is it just the capital?
Well, the capital portion, as far as the boilers itself, is pre-bid. The installation part of it...
It's a turnkey, turnkey proposal for everything.
So, I, so...
Well, I mean, usually, like when you buy off the state items or whatever, it's hardware, right? You don't, if you wanted to buy something, you also would have to figure out how you're going to use it. But you buy a car or something like that, right? You get the, the squad is on the list, but if you're going to go do all the other stuff, that's not, that's something that chief would have to go and find pricing for.
So, the Sourcewell agreement that we have, Johnson Controls has a setup to be able to give you guys the best pricing we can give for equipment, and then also includes all of our labor costs, too. So, it's a, it's a set amount that we get, be able to pay, or that you're able to, to get the discounted pricing for basically turnkey projects for Johnson Controls. So, it covers just about anything we can do, more or less, so as a turnkey project. We did the same Sourcewell agreement for the City Hall project here last summer, so.
I guess, yeah, I guess I wasn't quite sure. That's the, when we get these, that's the installed price.
Any other questions, Mr. Demers? Not right now. Mr. Johnson?
I, this probably doesn't have any much to do with, when was that building built? And why did we have, why did we have issues? Johnson Controls put the heaters in in ninety-four, correct? And when was the building built?
The building was built in nineteen eighty-seven, and initially it had electric boilers in there. That was part of the, I believe, NEPL Engineering out of Grand Forks built the building. The boilers that were initially put in, the electric ones, weren't large enough to heat the building. So, in nineteen ninety-four, they decided to go with natural gas, and those were installed by Associated Plumbing and Heating. And then Associated was a little bit, at the time, they had some issues with the controls at that time. Then they called Johnson Controls in to come in, assist with adding the controls.
I was just wondering how everything deteriorated, you know, at a rapid pace. Forty-five years old.
So, and I think that...
Furnace is good for, they say ten.
It shows you the table of the useful life of a piece of equipment. And that's not our standards, that's ashtray, but American Society of Heating and Heating. They put together these, the stable basically as a reference to say, you know, a coil's going to last twenty years. A boiler, a cast-iron boiler is supposed to last twenty-five years, so. That's a guide, it's not a, this is a hard, true fact for every single boiler, but it's a guide to kind of help you understand, okay, I should be able to get twenty-five years out of a boiler if it's this style of boiler. And you're right at that, that number right now for these boilers.
Anything else?
I just want to say, and the one thing I can say, though, as far as this, we looked at this pretty seriously last winter as well for, for what we were going to do here this next year, because, yeah, this isn't just where it's at the end of its useful life. This thing was really starting to cause us a lot of problems, and we had a lot of issues with having the people that were on call for checking the boilers having to come in on weekends and nights and stuff like that for checking, because it was clogging up and the pressure wasn't going. Yeah, it's, it's, it's not just because of the time is up. It's, it's being held together with duct tape and baling wire right now.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. So, you said that there, Carla, let me see where you jumped up. You said that we have enough money in there. We have, did we budget any other expenditures for this year for Building Maintenance, or?
We have, but we actually, just because of the timing and when things are redone, we have this amount of money available. So, the only project that we're really working on now is Charlotte has finished up the library, which was a carryover last year. I know Mike Hedlin has dollars signed for remodeling there, but there are sufficient dollars between the fund balance in that account and the two fifty that we get every year.
Do we have any other department heads that are interested in what's, or have an interest or have seen things that are coming up in their buildings that we need to take care of potentially?
One coming up, number three.
Right, but I mean, yeah.
We have Skinner Roofing coming to look at the roof on Station Two tomorrow. We've done all the painting and remodeling out there and noticed a leak, so whether they can patch it or the end of life, but that's been on the capital improvement list for, I think, about five years now. And we've just kind of pushed it back because it really hasn't been a problem as of yet. So, we'll know more by next week.
It would potentially be next year, wouldn't it, correct?
I would hope.
The only other thing that I have, we're working on parks, is some of the roof leaking that we have at the VFW Arena. I'm working on getting pricing back for that. But I think, Carla, we have that accounted for in the Building Maintenance, even including all of these projects, that the dollar amount we're thinking it's going to cost to bring that forward is, Carla's got that accounted for and what we're thinking is available for all of this.
Shefendl?
On that topic, I actually plan to speak to some of these gentlemen. Our control panel, which controls our alarms and our door access panels, as well as all the interior doors, cell doors, et cetera, that's antiquated. Just say the latest communication we've been discussing a number of times, and it's always been discussed for all of the meetings, we should do an entire system system. At this point, we're going to have to change that, but I'm planning on having that request to my 2020 budget. Somewhat related note on the roofs, our large vent hood that's on the southwest corner of our building, McFarland's, it does our heating and cooling, and that, we've had a number of issues with that in the past. It's becoming more and more, basically, it's, there's free access with, you know, for birds and insects through a certain portion of that, and that's recommended for repair as well. We also plan to have that for the 2020 budget.
I have small capital. Work here at City Hall, replacing the projector and screen with either TV or something similar, and then adding a nursing station in the, in the break room. So, between those two, I would say anywhere between six thousand and eleven thousand.
Anybody else? Speak up now, or it forever holds a peace.
If you're giving money away, I'll have some.
All right, moving on. Number three, request to replace air conditioner and coil for library, Charlotte.
Thank you. Before we start using duct tape and twine at the library, it would be a good idea on our AC unit that has had repair. We have repaired the panel, which I don't get to look at very often, but when they took it apart and showed it to me, you can see where it's been cut away and had to have pipes soldered in it. Johnson Controls, up to this point, has done a very good job of keeping it consistent for us. But again, like had been mentioned with the boilers, our AC is at the end of its twenty years of life. So, we know it's only going to go downhill from here. So, rather than it going down next summer, if we can plan to fix it now, rather than put approximately eleven, twelve thousand dollars into a panel and fix it and let it just go maybe a year, the wise thing to do would be to replace it. Right. Our building was put up in two thousand one, and it was done, it was done really well. I think the city as a whole has been very proud of it. It's a very comfortable building, and we've looked at the interior and redone all of that. And we certainly don't want to start having mechanical problems and it going down that way.
Any questions for Charlotte?
This one's a rooftop, right?
No.
It's on the ground?
It's a split, so some of the area was inside.
Mr. Helms?
I just have one question for Johnson Controls. Did you throw our good customer discount in on all of these? Multi-discount?
Anybody else for number three? Moving to number four, request for boiler replacement at the VFW Arena. Reed?
All right, thank you, sir. So, we did know going into this year that the boiler, boilers at the VFW Arena were at the end of their life. And they, Johnson Controls came in and helped us be able to get the boilers up and running this last fall to get us through this, through the year. And I think Travis, when he came to work on them, said you'll be lucky if these make it through the season. And they lasted through the season by about three days. And the, basically, the water pan that circulates the water through them is, it's a cast-iron pan that's completely rusted through. So, we knew they were shot when we had water leaking out onto the mechanical room floor. So, the proposal from Johnson Controls, currently, there's two units that are, two boilers that are in there servicing that. And when Johnson Controls came in to look and to give us a price on replacing those, said that they're drastically undersized for the size of the building and for the operating standards that we keep there, and has suggested that we place it with this, with a one boiler unit that would be much larger and much, size much better to circulate the water through it at the temperature we heat it to, and then to be able to service the heat for the building. So, it is changing out from a two-boiler system to a one-boiler system, but would be much larger and much more efficient than our current setup.
Any questions? Mr. Helms?
Someone for Carla. You say there's money in that account for all these?
We wouldn't have run to you if there wasn't, so. We did, we did some digging, and actually, I know Reed had came in and talked to me about it, and I said, what does it cost to put, to fix it, put the better one in the last and bring it back? And I did the same with Charlotte. She said this is what's going to cost to fix, what is it to replace, and there is sufficient dollars.
And then this is going to set us up for twenty years again, then? Is that the deal? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Absolutely, and the condenser, too.
Okay, thank you.
And there is some flexibility in this. I know you guys are looking at long-term on that building. If it were to change that boiler, it could be used for any heating system in the future, if you decided to do some different use for that. It's not like you're not going to be able to keep that boiler. And there was also a rebate, I believe, that we're going to be able to get for the VFW, too. So, we're dialing in on what that exact amount is, but the minimum would be about thirty-five hundred and probably more if we do a customer rebate, so.
Thank you for adding that, I didn't think of that.
Seeing none, we'll move on to number five, update on DNR legacy application for LeFave Park. Reed?
Thank you again. So, just following up from the discussion a couple of weeks ago at our work session, what I really wanted to try to share a little bit more information and had Mr. Emery put together some different price examples for you based on some of that discussion. Regarding, a lot of it was based around the parking lot and the road. If we wanted Batuminous parking lot and/or a gravel parking lot. Steve and I discussed if we went to a gravel parking lot, we'd more than likely, under the current stormwater retention plans that the, the DNR expects in a new boat ramp along a river setting like that, that we would want it, if it's gravel, it should be curb and gutter, to have some realm of some stormwater runoff retention with it. So, he made a few edits to our pricing. There's still an example in the price documents that were shown to you of what the Batuminous lot price would look like. And he gave a second example of what a gravel parking lot would look like that added curb and gutter to wrap that entire parking lot with curb and gutter. When you add the curb and gutter with the gravel parking lot, the price doesn't change a whole heck of a lot. It does come down some, but not as significant as I, even I would have expected. So, there's a few examples. We didn't give you an updated schematic drawing of this, just with last week being the holiday and Steve and I's schedules being on different directions with that. We didn't make any changes to this now, but if you want to see anything specific to that, we could certainly have that ready for next week's council meeting to bring that back. As far as the grant application portion of this is concerned, and of course, that being the most, from a time-sensitive standpoint, the biggest, probably the bigger part of the conversation right now. I did go back and look, last summer, when we submitted the grant application, we submitted a total project of eighty thousand dollars, and we did support a twenty-five percent match on that, which is for, so that our match percent is eighteen thousand dollars. That's for the kayak and canoe launches along the Red and the Red Lake River, two of those. And then the rest of that being a lot of wayfinding signage, wood barriers, rocks for landscaping to try to limit the vehicle access to the greenway and restricted areas that we see a lot of, kind of in the off-roading areas. So, we do need to plan for that. We planned this year in the CIP, there was ten thousand five hundred, and in 2021, seventy-five hundred. So, that's in the two years, or the upcoming two years, we planned a little bit in each. And that grant period would then expire, for that current grant award, that grant period would expire on June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. So, we have until that window to spend those dollars. At this point in time, of course, the fiscal year for that project just started on July first, just a week ago. We haven't done any work on that yet. We haven't received approval from the DNR to be able to do so. The first step is, once the grant period starts, is we have to go through a lot of the paperwork and the administrative side of getting approval to spend the dollars in the intended ways that we listed. That doesn't happen until the grant period starts. They don't, we don't start any of that work. So, if we made an application going forward for this grant period, which is due on August second of this, in two weeks, three weeks, we would go through the same process. If we, if we were to receive funding, we wouldn't start the grant period until July first, two thousand twenty, and we would have until June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three to spend any dollars that may be awarded, should we make an effort to go down that road. What I put in front of you were just the total project number, total project budget, with a one million, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. If we wanted to go the road of a twenty-five percent match, I put in front, that would be four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-five. For comparison, that would receive, in their scoring criteria, we would receive a full fifteen points available for the funding portion of the grant scoring. The whole grant is scored on a rating of a hundred points being the max points available. And it's scored on a number of different criteria, which was included in the packet for you. If we didn't want to do a twenty-five percent match, the next step is you receive ten points rather than fifteen for any percentage of a ten percent up to a twenty-four percent match. So, a ten percent match, that would be the lowest, would be one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. There is not any local match required to a... There is not any local match required to apply, but likelihood of funding, you know, is, is likely going to decrease with the lesser the match would be. Of course, the biggest, I think, question or conversation with all of this is what the funding source for any of the local matches. And certainly that's not an answer that I, that I have today. It would, it would be, in just discussing it with David, it would mean a, a general levy increase, I think, for anything that we would try to do, unless we got creative in our funding sources going forward. If there's any potential for sales taxes as a swimming pool expires, any of those kinds of conversations about how it could possibly be funded. But we don't have anything currently allocated in our budget for future years to be able to apply for this.
Any questions? Mr. Helms?
Just me again. I don't know where we're at on this project exactly. I've, being as I missed the last couple of meetings, but I have, I'm, I'm really struggling with spending $1.6 million. It's a beautiful project, don't get me wrong. I really liked it when I seen it. I'd really like to see something be done, but to spend that kind of money on something that we don't know that every spring could be wiped out, we don't know that. And we got all these roads and everything else that need to be fixed. I just, I'm, I'm really concerned about the dollar amount. I, I, I just don't know, I'm not 100% sure I'd support it yet or not. It's a beautiful project, don't get me wrong. I'm just, I, I, had I even thought that it would have come in, that price would have come in so high like that, I, I, I just couldn't believe it when I seen it. Because, you know, basically, oh, we're getting as a, some parking lot and some trees and shrubs. I mean, boat ramp, of course, but I, I just, I'm struggling with it. So unless there's something else we can do to, I know we got the, hopefully we can get the governor here, which would be beautiful, but we don't even know that if we did it, if we, if it would be really nice looking when he's here or not, you know, depending on what, what the, the flood every year does. So I'm, I'm struggling with it a little bit with all the other stuff that needs to be done, so.
Reed, go ahead.
I think I, I 100% agree with your sentiment on that. I, I feel the same way with it. And really, I think my point in this is that we've been discussing for a long time the need for the boat ramp to be improved and wanted to bring forward an idea from, from an experienced group like WSN and a landscape architect, to have them involved to be able to kind of dream about this entire park area and how it can be improved and see, you know, what can come up with it, or what we could potentially use it for. I think in the long term, the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission and this source of funding through the legacy funds, should we ever want to make significant changes or improvements to that area, I think that's a funding source that we have a real opportunity to use to do it. So that was why I wanted to start with, let's start with this big picture of what the whole park could potentially be, and then if we want to work backwards from there, let's work backwards from there. So I think if this group, if you feel like this is not something that we have an opportunity to, to go after or obtain right now, and we want to focus on what was the number one reason we brought this discussion forward in the first place, and that was that our boat ramps need to be improved, maybe we get together and, and potentially, Steve, I'm looking at you a little bit, but maybe we have to work really quick in the next week. And can we look at what is just the boat ramp? What is it just to replace the boat ramps? And line items here, you know, the boat ramps are listed at $125,000 apiece. We can apply for any, anything from, you know, $5,000 up to this large project with this group. And if we are interested in some form of a local match to go along with it, I think we'd have a really strong opportunity. It hits all the bases from the grant criteria. I, I really believe it does, and that this is a regionally significant boat ramp for our area. It's a regionally significant park with the number of visitors it gets each year. If we make improvements, it's only going to help bring more people to our community and to the region. So I, I'm 100% on board with any direction you guys give us in that if we want to dial it back and look at something on a smaller scale, or if we recognizing the opportunity, want to just continue the discussion for future years, or anything in between, I'm open to all of it.
Any comments for Reed?
When we had Explore Minnesota here, we talked to her and Reed was there and our, Greater Grand Forks Convention Visitors Bureau people. And we talked about how there's really no way from a funding standpoint that we can execute a master plan for that area in time for the governor's fishing opener. And yet, we could use that event as kind of a launchpad for paying attention to this area and staging out these improvements. I sure like the idea of picking off our highest priorities, such as the boat launch area, and, and zeroing in on that and then taking it in steps. The other beauty of having a master plan is you're not going off willy-nilly doing every little thing that you do. So every little element that you put in there can be kind of orchestrated around that, that bigger plan. That's the other benefit of a plan. If it takes 20 years to fully implement, at least you're not building something and tearing it down to build the next thing. And, you know, you're, you're being strategic and going step by step toward that plan over the long period of time. So I, I agree with everything that you all have said. I can't see that high dollar for something like this all at one time. But I, I would love to see, and again, the Explore Minnesota rep told us, this happens in communities all the time. They use this governor's fishing opener as kind of a launchpad to make some improvements in their community even after the event. So it isn't all, and we told her, it's going to look a lot like this, maybe we can get the boat ramp, maybe not. We'll probably try to improve the green space, that flat area, take out cement chunks and rebar and whatnot, where you could put up a tent, have a really nice gathering. And she said, yeah, that, that's a great use of this governor's fishing opener is to follow out in, in, out years after that, to making your improvements down there. So yeah, I, I agree with, there's no way to, to chunk out a big dollar like that, knowing it won't even, any of it be there for the fishing opener. This is a long-range plan, in stages.
Steve, I got a question about the, the ramps. So you're, it says construct boat ramp, 125,000 per ramp. We, we wanted to go to one, we were going to go south, correct?
That's correct. That was kind of the thought.
Does it go one south and then replace? Can you throw some information of why it's 125,000 per ramp? I mean, what would need, I mean, what is the major cost in that? Is it the excavating? Is it the stopping of the water? Is it, what is it?
I mean, it's, it's the cost. It's, I mean, you know, the little bit of difficulty doing that work, but then we're also going to have to basically, you know, hard armor, you know, the banks and stuff there too, with, you know, a cable treat or rip rap or some type of, you know, so we don't have erosion issues, you know, on the road too, so.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question because that number's been thrown around and I... Mr. Demers?
Thank you. You know, I don't think I'd agree. I think nobody's ready to swallow like a $400,000 pill in over the next couple of years. But the way I look at it, I, I agree a lot with what the mayor says. We have a plan, at least that we somewhat agree with, and we should move forward in, in working towards it. I just look at that phase one, you know, it's nine, it's almost a million dollars, but if you take out the $550,000 for the boat ramps, I mean, you're stuck, you're at 440,000. You talk about a 25% match, then you're talking about $110,000. You know, that gives you a pretty good chance of getting something, 100 and some thousand dollars over a three-year period of budgeting is, you know, you know, $40,000 or, you know. So that gets to be something where it's a little bit more doable if we want to go after that. And, and what I was saying is, why you can take that 550 out is because I, and I need to be more vocal about it. We all need to be more, more vocal about it, but we were promised a boat ramp. Back in 2010, we were next on the list to get in it. We don't, they say in life, you don't deserve a lot, but we, we do deserve that. It's, it's a, it's a regional thing. This, it, I don't think legacy dollars are the right avenue for that. This is the DNR's responsibility. And I think, like I said, they promised that we were going to be funded for that and it was going to be put in. And I think we should be more vocal about that. And we should talk to whoever we need to, whether it's our legislators or, or whomever. But that chunk of 550,000, because that's part of the project, is the parking, the ramps and everything, that the, this state should put in. And like I said, once, once you take that out now, now you're looking at a much more manageable thing, you know, that we could deal with. So that's my point.
Anything else for Reed?
One, one thought to the point that you just made, Mr. Demers. We do want to reach out to the DNR on a couple of other things, and I think that should be among the list of things that we talk about to the, to the regional DNR representative when we make that connection. I know there's a turnover happening in that position right now, a retirement and a, and a new person stepping in there. And so I'd like to, and Mark, if you're willing to be part of it, and Reed, and, because you obviously have a great connection to the whole greenway up and down the Red Lake corridor, so I think that would be an important voice, if you have a memory back to 2010 or whatever year that was, and hold them accountable, I think that's a great idea.
I, I would just, if I could ask for a little more clarification, looking ahead to next week's council meeting, do you want to see anything from us in terms of a resolution that would give us approval to apply for a grant through this year's funding application? Do you want to see anything at all next week? Do you not want to see anything? If you want to see something, what realm of that do you want to see? I know I'm asking a lot of questions. I'm kind of pushing on everybody right now on a quick turnaround, but that's what we're faced with if we, if we want to make an application for this year.
I kind of agree with Mark's idea about pulling some of that, you know, pull the ramp out, try to look at something there, put it all together.
Maybe drill it down to that a little under 400,000 of our, of our other top priorities.
Does anybody else have a feeling about that? Would be disagree with something if we did something like that?
That would be about $100,000 that, that we'd have to come up with over three years.
Right. Carla?
I, I just have a question. Is there any way you can submit the whole project and the other project? Or if you get, do you have to take the whole project? I'm saying, so if you looked, you know, looked into it and you decided you couldn't do the whole project, or, and the money came from the DNR to do the docks, then you could do the other part. You know, if they awarded you a million, do you have to take a million? Is my question, I guess.
I think the expectation from, from the commission side is that if we put in an application saying we're going to fund a certain amount, that we're going to stick to that amount. But I think to your point a little bit, if there's other funding sources that become available, I, I guess I'd have to find out an answer. I could certainly call and ask and have that answer for next week. Because I think that they, I would assume they would encourage that if we could find other funding sources, that'd just mean more legacy dollars available for other parties.
And if it just maybe, so we're talking about if we're looking at the, say, the $400,000 level roughly, were we talking about putting in the, just focusing on the boat ramps? Is that what you were, you know, what you guys were thinking, or?
Well, my thought, when I said 400,000, was to take the boat ramps out of the legacy funding formula and do 80% to 100% of what's left in the phase one portion or of this proposal, which gives you about probably a little over $400,000.
And then go after, and then...
Go after the DNR for the docks. For the boat ramps and parking lot.
The boat ramps, like 255?
But the parking is included in it.
Parking.
They include, that was part of their design as well.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Just for, again, back to your memory of, of that promise, do we have any written documentation or is it just in the minds of, of the staff? I would have to look through my stuff. I know we've had, we had meetings down, down here. You know, they weren't like a regular work session meeting, it was a special meeting specifically for this. I would talk to Steve and maybe they have some notes from when we would, I don't know if you were in here, Greg, or who was doing it. Would those be searchable, Megan? Any way to find them out of the archives?
Possibly.
Don't go too crazy on time, but if, if, if we can come up with some substantiating paper trail to bring that back, I think that would be in our favor, one way or the other.
So then, back to Reed's question, do we want to, and the app has to be in by when?
August 2nd is the, is the final deadline for, to turn into the commission. So I've been telling every, I, in order for me to be able to get organized, you know, really, I don't have our council meeting schedule in front of us, but I think next Tuesday is really the last meeting we have before that deadline.
Next meeting on August 6th.
Yeah. So next Tuesday's meeting is our last regular meeting before everything would be due.
And the alternative is wait two years?
Yeah, well, we, we can, there's an application period every year at this time. So we can apply, we could apply again next summer, it just moves our, our window back one more year. Remember, we're applying right now for fiscal year 2021, so if we wait till next summer, we're, we're applying for fiscal year 2022.
I'd love to see it up to that 400 target of our priorities other than the boat ramp. That's what I'd like to see.
If I can add one more thing, I don't have the, I don't have all the information in front of me, but the only sticking point to that may be avail, that may cause an issue for us applying for, for legacy dollars through this fashion without the boat ramps, is one of the criteria, and Steve, you and I would have to look at it, but the criteria, one of the bullet points is that eligible funding can be used for parking lots or park roads as long as it is 40% or less of the total project amount. So if we're thinking that we're going to apply through legacy dollars for the parking lot improvement portion, but we're going to leave the boat ramp out of it, that's probably going to skew our total project percentage pretty high on the side of roads and parking lots, and we may not be eligible anyway. Again, I'm kind of just like throwing things out here because I don't have it all in front of me, but.
In my recollection is, is that the parking and the ramps were all one thing that the DNR was providing. That's why I was saying, you've, to Clarissa's point, is you, you take that 250 and that, and what was it, another 300 for the parking area?
294, something like that.
I'd, I'd be very happy to try to go down that road, 100% funded. That's better than 75.
Got what you need?
We have it, yes.
Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
Number six, request for direction on unlawful signs. Mr. Hetland.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm sure you've all, we've all witnessed signs in the right of ways and berms throughout the community on multiple occasions. Technically, they're in violation of our city ordinance. Because of the vast number of them, we typically have not taken any enforcement action. We certainly have not issued any citations, although we, we certainly could if there was somebody that was a continuous violator. It's one of those types of, of ordinances that is in place, but enforcement of it is difficult to put mildly. When we do enforcement, it's typically just the officers pulling the signs. And that's, that's generally just on a complaint-driven basis. We had such a situation happen just a couple of weeks back, and one of the people that, that had their signs removed was upset about the fact that their signs were removed and subsequently contacted us. And I guess that's kind of what brought me to, to bring this before you, just kind of looking for some direction as to whether we want to consider revamping our ordinance or whether you would like us to start trying to strictly enforce this and pull them as fast as we see it. If that were going to be the case, I guess I would actually be looking for assistance from other city departments, whether it would be Public Works or Parks and Rec or whoever, because it, it is a rather significant volume. It's, it's more than just, you know, officers, certainly maybe, for example, on the, on the publicly owned areas, that not just the right of ways through people's yards, but areas that are, are in areas that Parks and Rec and Public Works mow, perhaps their folks could, could pull those signs at that point in time, if that's what you want. I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas and options. I don't particularly have a, a strong feeling one way or another. To a degree, those signs perform a service for, for our citizens, both the people that want to attend those functions and the people who are having those various functions. But it, it can be a bit overwhelming at times.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So currently, when we pull the signs, do we also confiscate the signs or do we leave them on their property?
If we pull the signs... If we pull the signs, where we've pulled them from is typically going to be a very clearly public area, and then they're just removed and thrown away.
Yep.
One of the areas that we probably get the most complaints out or the most visible ones is that little island area out in front of Orton's. That tends to be one that accumulates a lot of signs, and that's, you know, not private property.
I wonder if there'd be any way to notify the individuals who have the signs out? Because if my sign was gone, I'd think maybe it was stolen by just anyone. Not that I was in some violation. They maybe don't even know they're in violation, and then their sign is gone. So maybe there, I don't know if there's a name and address on there, if the officer could, you know, just even drop off a copy of our ordinance and say, we received a complaint about the sign. I don't think we have to step up enforcement myself, because, you know, we can use common sense too, which we already have been doing. But when it is pulled, if there would be a way to notify them that here's what's going on, it was in a location, we got a complaint, it had to be lifted, here's a copy of the ordinance which guides where signs can be placed, bam.
You've just now tripled or quadrupled the amount of time and effort that the officer's going to have to spend on that.
Unless they don't have to use five more times in the next month.
But on a given weekend, there's probably 15 to 20 garage sales around town.
Well, I guess the issue.
So it's 15 to 20 people that we then have to contact.
The issue, what we see, and it really, how far, what signs we really want to go after, because a lot of them are, we'll just say garage sale with an arrow pointed down. Some of them have the address on it, so you could find it that way. Very few of the garage sale signs have like phone numbers on them. Most of the time, they'll just have, if they have anything, it's an address, like I said. And then they also have the house for sale by owner signs that people will put out there. There's the realtor signs, open house signs that people put up for, that if there's going to be an open house firm on Sunday from 1:00 to 3:00, a lot of those end up in the right of way.
Mike, I have a question. What is the, I mean, what's the average complaint per week on signs?
It's very rare. I would say several times a year.
Mr. Helms?
My question, Chief Hetland, what is the, what is the charge for, do we, you know, for that?
I believe it'd be just a petty misdemeanor.
Pardon?
I believe it's just a petty misdemeanor. I don't know if Mr. Goldston's aware of that, but I believe that's all it would be.
A misdemeanor is probably, it would be, if you're, it would be about a $25 fine, however, on top of that, because of the court fees, there's always $85 added to it, so you got to add it, you know, 100 and 100.
Well, it's not something that we would just write them a citation and they'd pay us, they'd have to go to court and do all the other stuff. It'd be, could get kind of costly for a little garage sale sign.
We currently don't have administrative fines within the city as far as the ability for our officers to issue administrative citations. That would, we have the ability to do that, but that would be something we would have to adopt, and there's a lot more steps involved. Mr. Goldston and I have discussed that in the past, and to this point in time, we haven't felt it was in the city's best interest to go forward on that. So anything that we would issue a citation for would have to go to county court.
So most of these are just things that are like in someone's corner of their lot, and they're mad about it? Is there a way that whoever, could be Park and Rec, it could be you, it could be city that could just carry the ordinance or copy of it, staple it, or write onto the sign? So usually they come and get them, and just so that they know, instead of having to go through that process. I know it's, if you're going to get out and take the sign, you might as well get out, put this thing on it, and just go away.
Essentially, it's the right of way.
Right.
You know, I mean, and, for instance, the real estate signs are fine, they're exempt sign, with the exception of no signs are supposed to be in the right of way.
Right.
So I think the right of way, if we were talking about is if you back a curb 20 feet, that's where you could probably have it legally if it was your yard or permission from somebody else.
Chief, did I, did I hear that right, that the complainant was the one that was missing the sign?
Their sign, no.
Their sign got taken?
Yes.
Well, their sign was illegal.
It was.
What's the beef?
Their beef's, they missed them from the exact location where their sign had been removed from. Within a week, there were more signs back up, and we weren't removing those signs.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. I would commend the chief and his foresight in purchasing a pickup.
That's undisgusted.
I guess, my view is that if we have an ordinance that we don't want to follow or uphold or enforce, we should either review and revise it or remove it. I guess my thought would be enforce it until we hear that that's not something that the people want, and we would have to revise and review it. I guess I don't have a problem with the current ordinance. I put up a lot of signs in this town, and I've always tried to remember that you can't put it on our property. It's not, it's not my property, it's not his property, it's all of ours, and we don't have, and that's, I don't like signs on there. So while you might not give complaints, there are people that do make comments to themselves while they're driving. So, so like I said, is it the end of the world? Absolutely not. Does it look kind of junky, I think, on some weekends and days? Absolutely. And like I said, my policy would not be to tell you not to enforce. It would be if we don't want to enforce it, we should edit the ordinance.
I would agree with you, one direction or the other, which is why I brought this forward. Mr. Murphy mentioned the one location near Orton's. Another that I'm sure you've all seen is River Road at the bottom of the off-ramp coming off of Gateway Drive down to River Road. On the opposite side, you get to the east side of that intersection, and oftentimes, sometimes there's three, but I've seen as many as 20 there. And down near the VFW Arena at the time of the Arts and Crafts Fair. That area can be absolutely inundated as people try to tag their garage sales into, you know, trying to get people that are visiting the Arts and Crafts Fair to then come to their garage sale facility. So there are certainly areas that can become quite tacky looking.
Just as for discussion, I mean, we do other things based upon when complaints come. You know, if you have a noisy neighbor, you guys aren't walking up and down apartment hallways looking for noisy neighbors, but noisy neighbor complaints do happen out in our community and you respond to those. So there is some precedent for waiting until there was a complaint to follow up on something. So in other words, your current policy of if someone does call and complain about a sign, that's your kind of loose standard for when that sign is removed. You know, in one way, that's reasonable. It does allow entrepreneurs in our community who want to sell some stuff out of their garage to direct people to their homes, and you hate to take all that away from them too. So that's the other side of it.
A competitive entrepreneur might complain about the other person's.
Exactly.
You have an answer on theirs.
That's what happened.
So I just throw that out as, you know, they're.
There's positives and negatives regardless of which way we go. And I guess I'm just, you know, I agree with everything Mr. Demers said. Just, you know, if we're going to keep the ordinance as is, then we should probably enforce, whether that's a combined effort between our department, Parks and Recs, and Public Works, or just us, or whatever that case may be. Or if we don't like the ordinance, then I agree with you, we should either modify it or just eliminate it.
Anybody have an opinion?
We really haven't helped you a lot here, have we?
Not so far, but maybe.
We can put this back on in a couple of weeks.
It's one of these issues that all cities deal with, and, you know, there's no perfect ordinance for it. It's like, you know, this one is kind of the rage right now, and the reason we brought this forward is because the complainant was pretty adamant about it, the one that, who his sign was removed. And it's, it's the same thing with, like, for example, ordinances for keeping chickens and things like that in town too. They get to be quite controversial in what's allowed and what's not. So the signs, yeah, it's, there's no perfect ordinance, and, you know, and we just wanted to bring it to your attention. But we certainly, it's not a pressing issue, we could certainly.
Perhaps we do want to wait for two weeks, and we could have it back on the work session in two weeks. And I'm guessing that our fine folks that are here from the exponent would be kind enough to mention this, and maybe we can get some response to you folks from our citizens as to how they would like to see us proceed, since ultimately, they're the ones that are going to be affected the most.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put chickens on in two weeks. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said it.
How about pigs?
Number seven, discussion on the 2020-2021 MinDOT Transit application.
Those guys aren't standing.
Scared them away with that one.
Yeah. Scared them all away.
They're scaring them now.
I know.
Just say transit.
That's what they're doing, yeah. Pulling their garage sale signs.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll try to make this fairly brief. It's time again for annual MinDOT Transit application this year. They're requesting a two-year application. So what we did was I received the cost allocation plan for our fixed route, and I received the cost per passenger for our Dial-A-Ride senior rider, and then I used those numbers to prepare the application. So the first RCA that you received was from 2018 numbers. It's been revised to include our updated routes. And we had to, there was a variable involving UND being added to the system. When we do a cost allocation model, we look at it as percentages of revenue miles, percentages of revenue hours, et cetera, and that's how they figure the total cost. And then they do percentages for East Grand Forks, for what Grand Forks pays and what UND pays. So based on the request that I'm making now, it is strictly for Grand Forks and East Grand Forks service. If UND jumps into the mix, it will drop the cost of our service by about $90,000. So that, again, all dependent on UND. UND is not quite sure what they're going to do at this point, so we did not add them because they more than likely wouldn't start until next year. So just to quickly go over the total cost for fixed route for 2020, it's about $584,000. That includes my salary. Right now, I'm charging about 20% of my salary to transit. There has been discussion with MinDOT that I should up that number because of the number of regulations and requirements that I have for both MinDOT and FTA. And so then what that would do is we'd probably look at increasing that to like a 30 or 35% and I'll be discussing that with our urban transit person. That also includes, again, benefits. And so if we do up that, the number would probably go up by another 6,000 or 7,000. What I do is I take that percentage, I divide it equally between Dial-A-Ride and the fixed route service. So just to figure out the formula, we take our total cost, which is salary and cost of service, we subtract federal dollars. Then what we do is we subtract the fares, that gives us a flat number. We take a percentage for the MinDOT, MinDOT pays 85%, and then the leftover is local. Again, another variable that I'm working with MinDOT with is our federal funds. Right now, we're appropriated about $160,000 every year, the state of Minnesota, which they're trying to determine where that actually came from. At one point in time, there was a directive that only 50% of that appropriation could be used for operating. What we're finding is that the operating is, for an East Grand Forks, is a majority of my cost. So using the 50/50, I've got a 50, like 80,000 every year that's just sitting there that they want to use for capital. We change out our buses, and we're between every four years for the smaller buses or seven years for the larger buses. So we've kind of got this cash amount that just is kind of sitting, and we're trying to figure out ways to spend it on capital. Because from a Grand Forks side, or East Grand Forks side, we don't have a lot of shelters, we don't have a station, we're not looking at a lot of that stuff. So what we're looking at doing is doing a 75/25. So 75% of the federal funds would go towards operating, that 25% would go towards capital, and we can combine those appropriation funds up to four years, and then that would go for like a larger capital project. The feds are completely in agreement with that. They said we could spend up to 100% of those operating dollars, or on operating dollars. MinDOT is a little less excited about the idea, so we're still working through that. So that would adjust the federal funds. Getting right down to it though, if they adjust the federal funds to a 75/25, that would just mean less money that MinDOT would put into their percentage, and then our local share wouldn't change significantly. So our local share for 2020 would be about $73,000 and $76,000 for 2021. That's not too far away from what we typically budget. It's a 20%, and that again does include my salary. So on the Dial-A-Ride side, I've got about $101,000 for 2020 and $103,000. Again, that includes average riders, which we're at about 5,800 per year. And then our, we have a third-party contract right now with MV Transportation. They charge us $14.90 per passenger for 2020, and then $15.20 for 2021, which is in their contract. We are in the process of reviewing that contract. There's been discussion every year of Grand Forks possibly taking that in-house, which would save about $200,000 to $250,000. If that becomes a possibility, I'll just bring that back to you, because again, that would make the cost of the Dial-A-Ride senior rider service and our local share go down. So I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Questions for Nancy? Mr. Helms?
The Dial-A-Ride, that fixed rate that you have with that contractor you're working with, is that, that doesn't matter where they go in the city? Or is it?
Nope. It's just per passenger, per ride.
Okay. So if they went from the high-rise to the Hugo's or out to the mall, it's the same price?
Yep. We average about four miles is what we, you know, that's what we figure. It's an average of about four miles per passenger. So that's what we use in terms of our revenue mileage. But in essence, every single trip is, you know, whether you go to Ultra, that's considered one trip. If they come and pick you up, that's considered a second trip. And that's what they're charging, per passenger, per trip.
Okay. And so where do you figure in the buses? Where do you figure, how many buses does East Grand Forks actually have?
We have three.
We have three?
Yep.
Okay.
We have a Class 300, which is a smaller bus, it holds about 17 passengers with about 11 tie-downs for, you know, that Dial-A-Ride or those that are wheelchair accessible. And then last year, we received 100% funding to purchase a large Class 400, which is, you know, one of the larger buses, and that one is used for routes four and six. And by, what I mean by four and six is it travels into Grand Forks, and then it comes back to East Grand Forks, and it connects with routes four and six. So.
So you figure, the cost of those buses are figured in each year that you.
The cost of the buses is a full separate application.
It is.
Yep.
But normally, it's 100% funded though? I mean, it doesn't really cost?
Nope. Buses are funded through the state at an 80/20. Buses for Dial-A-Ride are funded at an 85/15 through the feds. And then what we do is I put together, we have to have a 10-year capital plan, and then when it comes to that year, then that gets budgeted into our capital plan. So it's in our, it's already in our capital plan, in our budget. So operating is separate. And then again, that always is dependent too. Sometimes there's additional funds, like the year that we got the large bus for a new service expansion, that was paid at 100%. So.
Any other questions for Nancy? Seeing done. Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Helms.
Second.
Second by DeMurs. Hold favorite.
Aye.
All right, posed.
Meeting adjourned.